Like to call the meeting to order at 5:05 PM on August 27th. Thank you, Area 58, for filming tonight. We just completed our building walkthrough, so that's taken care of at the start of the school year. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to be acknowledged or scheduled at this time? No one? So, last meeting, we had our minutes from June that we put off to the end of the meeting, and we forgot to vote them, or I forgot to ask for a vote on them. So, we need to approve them now. So, we don't have them in our packet, but they were in our last month's packet, so it was everybody had a chance to look them over and do good with anything that's there. Okay.
Somebody has to make a motion.
Yep, I need a motion to approve the minutes from June 4th, 2018.
I have a motion to approve the minutes of June 4th, 2018.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. And then we have the minutes from our July 5th meeting, so everyone had a chance to look those over. I did before we came. So, I need a motion to approve the July 5th minutes.
Oh.
Okay. Hey, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, warrants are being circulated, and Gordon, Christine told us that you came in and signed the warrants for the month that...
I did.
Bless.
For August 60, came in and signed. Eight warrants totaling $132,871.84.
Good. Thank you for doing that, appreciate it.
That's the most I've signed off on, just...
School committee correspondence and reports. I just, I don't have anything. Unfinished business. Anybody have any unfinished business? Anybody have any new business?
You have it later, so you have...
Yeah. Anybody like to see anything on the agenda for our October 15th meeting?
Just a quick discussion.
Okay.
Just talk about what's going on with the finance committee stuff, and just a quick update of what we're gonna be looking at, because the November meeting between the selection and the finance committee will be coming up, so at least we'll have some information to share with them.
Report of standing committees, policy did not meet. Negotiations did not meet. Did PAC meet?
No, not until October.
Okay. Youth and rec. I don't have any. PTO is not meeting, summer.
They're September 13th.
And do you know who's going to that meeting? Are you going to the meeting?
I cannot go there.
So, who's going to that meeting? Who's alternate, I forget?
For which?
For PTO.
Yeah, September 13th. Alright, I'll be there.
What time is that at? If you can't make it, call one of us, and we'll try to, we'll send Bob, he loves that stuff.
Good stuff.
You sit all the way at the end for a reason, we're just nominating you for things. Capital budget, we're done with the budget for right now. Building and safety, we just did our walkthrough, so we'll, I guess, regroup on everything that we just did and talk about at our next meeting, so I guess maybe that should be on our future agenda also, just to give an update of where the building project and stuff like that. Hopefully be all done by then. Yep. Admin review. Nope. Union 31, we're meeting tonight at 6:00. Yep, so we'll have an update on that next time. And Ms. Healy, financial report.
That went really fast. My notes are in your package, you will see the financial report tonight. We're in pretty good shape, and I hope it will stay there. Just a couple of things I want to bring to your attention, on page 1 of the detail, you will see a 10 scale on top of the page for $159.10. Those are our dues for mass association school committees. What happens is we get one invoice for the whole region in the union, and it's a portion based on enrollment. It went up a little more than I had expected, and then Halifax percentage of the union went up a little more, and I had not built that into my formula. So, that's the only invoice we pay out of that line, and that's where that line's gonna stay for the rest of the year. The other writing, page 3, the detail, well, two thirds of the way down the page, you see a deficit of $360. That is for some unexpected tutoring services that had to take place in some ways. They were unexpected and unbudgeted, but it is what it is, so we need to take care of those things. And then off your foot, we'll move to the next page. Oh, it's not there. There should be a special education page, and, oh, it's in the very beginning. We're looking at, in audit district, special education, transportation, right now, we're expecting a deficit of $7,885, based on what we know right now.
Can you repeat that?
As of what we know right now, that will continue to change as we give better information, but that's what we believe will be happening right now. And then just below that, you'll see our audit district vocational. As you can see, there's nothing in cover there yet. Two of the three schools don't start till next week, so things can change up until the very last minute. I'm hopeful that for the next meeting, we'll have the level of incumbent both institutions and the transmutations for all students that we're aware, that are enrolled in the audit district classes. And I'm expecting that will be a sufficient budget to cover all those students. So, that's it for right now.
Okay. Any questions? One moment. Thank you. You're welcome.
Right, I guess one quick question, more procedurally than budget-wise. How does the tutoring, is that obviously on a national basis?
In this, there must have been a special situation. I just came back today, so I didn't have a chance to find out what this situation was, but it's unusual.
Okay. That's awesome. Let's go now.
Ms. Pearl? So, at the end of the year, I had the opportunity to participate in a grant workshop, which allowed me to better understand the new grant workbook for Title 1, Title 2, and Title 4 is now a consolidated grant workbook. And so, I worked with Melissa Farrell over the summer to secure those grants with her, and those grants have been awarded. Steve Blatt and Melissa Farrell were appointed as mentor leaders, and they have worked with the building principals over the summer to make sure that each beginning educator has a mentor. And we just had our full-day orientation last Friday for all new faculty as well. The Professional Development Council finalized its proposed professional development schedule, and you have a copy of that in your packet. The curriculum coordinators are choosing to focus on a book study in order to create an action plan to help further implement social-emotional learning. Carol Gregory joined us from Rebus Associates this summer to work with our administrators to give us, to help build our capacity in terms of two of the five social-emotional learning capacities, and helped us to focus on ways that we can support our staff in implementing social-emotional learning in the classroom to benefit all students. At the end of the school year, we had a number of interdisciplinary events, including the senior parade, high school graduation, World's Fair at Dennett, preschool end-of-year celebrations, Flag Day celebrations, health and wellness days, zoo days, Shark Tank projects. We reviewed, as an administrative team, the opening day schedules, and today Steve McGuire joined us as our keynote speaker with an inspirational talk on back-to-school basics and reminding us about our focus on students and the importance, that important role that teachers and educators play in the lives of students in maintaining a positive energy throughout the school year. We will provide paraprofessional training tomorrow for our paraprofessional staff, and we will continue with our building-based meetings and mandatory trainings tomorrow as well. The Wellness Advisory Committee will be reconvening in the fall. They set a number of goals for the upcoming school year. We'd like to expand our wellness opportunities for staff, we'd like to expand and offer middle and high school breakfast programs. They'd like to do more with parent education around substance abuse, particularly with regard to vaping. And they would like to work with the high school to explore education component as a part of discipline for students surrounding substance abuse. So, those are some things to look forward to from the wellness team. The administration team held its annual retreat, and at the retreat, we reviewed our plan for success. We set and aligned our building goals and made plans for how we will work with staff to help them to align their goals with their building team and departmental goals. Attorney Dupere provided administrators with an overview on student discipline and bullying investigations, so that was a nice addition, nice support for administrators as well over the summer months to focus on any changes and ways that we can improve upon our practices from a legal standpoint. The summer newsletter was shared with the community in July, and as always, I thank everyone for their contributions, because it is a group effort, and I am dependent upon teachers, administrators, and even students who have helped contribute to the newsletter this past year. Governor Baker is planning a statewide STEM week in October, and Scott Farrell has notified us that as part of his work with the STEM network, Silver Lake was asked to take part in this week. So, schools will be asked to highlight specific week-long STEM curriculum, and we know that Scott will be reaching out to Melissa Farrell to plan some pre-K through 6 involvement as well. The Massachusetts School Counselor Association is having a three-day workshop, and John Garofalo, the director of guidance, will be working with the administrative team to put together a small team to participate in that opportunity. And then finally, over the summer, the state announced that career vocational technical educators who have had one or more English language learners in their classroom during the 2017-2018 school year must now earn their sheltered English immersion endorsement by July of 2021. So, that sheltered English endorsement, or SEI endorsement, which we've talked about before, providing staff with training, in the past, that was for core teachers of students, that they were required to earn that endorsement. The state has now expanded that to include vocational teachers as well. And so, that's new, that's a new expectation for our teachers, and we've notified both the high school and Elliott Glass, and the teachers are aware of this change and requirement. And also in your packet is the professional development schedule, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them for you. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for her? Ms. Blackwood?
Thank you. I apologize, somehow Kane fell off the agenda, I just noticed.
Yeah, me too.
I don't know what happened here, but I noticed he was missing, I don't know where he went.
I guess you should probably talk to us about enrollment or something before we, might be important.
So, we will hold a joint bus discussion, either at the end or whatever, we'll do it together, but if you want to do your part and then end, and we'll talk about buses maybe together, that's okay.
Yeah, that's fine.
But I apologize, I just, I knew we forgot somebody.
It's not important or anything.
So, enrollment is at 614.
By grade 1, yeah, exactly.
So, we have two grade levels that are particularly hard, which is first grade and second grade.
Approximately how many students moved in that way into those?
Into those grades or overall?
I guess, overall, and if you, if you can approximate.
Grade 1 and 2 are a high grade for that, 98.
99 for grade 2.
99 and 2?
Yeah.
76 and 2, sorry, 92.
In person, yeah.
So, you got 68, 94 last year. You know what the first grade, first grade this year is? First grade this year is 97 or 98. So, 6 and 1/2.
And it's tough, because some moved out, some moved in.
Yeah.
I'm gonna say, overall, probably the number of, I don't know, let's get it up, but I wanna say a good estimate, it's around 25 to 30 movements.
Wow.
Five movements.
That's a lot. Yeah, it was. Yep. I mean, I think we ended last year around 604, something like that.
We had like 5, 95 when we graduated.
But at the end, right, yeah.
So, what is the enrollment?
Income of kindergarten?
No, the grant number.
600.
600.
That's the rural?
The REAP grant, yeah. Rural Education Assistance Program. But it's based on daily attendance, which is kind of interesting, I don't honestly know how they access that, because last year, we did break the 600 barrier, but we still were approved this year.
Is it like, over one year?
It's over one year, yeah, it's based on average daily attendance.
So, we're gonna keep out 15 kids?
That's what I was thinking. So...
We have it for this year.
We do have it for this year, yep, but it's very, very possible we will not get it next year.
Go ahead. I should have answered.
About 45, about 45. We don't actually have the figure yet for this year. It goes up and down a little bit, yeah, it's based on enrollment and the income of the town. So, I think, I don't know if the income of the town's quite the proper term, but, so it's, it is, it's flexible, but it's in the 40s.
So, just another question on enrollment. I know Christine had an update on the special needs number. Did we see an increase of students in special needs? When we talked about enrollment, like, did we have move-ins that...
We didn't have any move-ins that were expensive out of district placements, which I think is probably the question you're getting at.
That's what I'm trying to say.
I thought you might be frightened, I could read your mind.
Probably because I've asked the same question outside the table a number of times.
Maybe. Yeah, no, well, our budget should be okay.
Pearl?
Yep.
Just staffing update. We had three new hires this year. One was our good neighbors from Kingston, Zealoo. And the second was Natalie Donovan, who's a special education teacher in the upper grades. And just happening now, real-time Norm Formick left and took a job, she was a Title 1 teacher, so we ended up hiring Margaret Sullivan, who has been working in the district. She's done summer school with us, she was over in Kingston at one time, so Melissa Farrell helped facilitate that, so. Those are the three staff positions for the year. And then, building, I mean, I don't know if you've seen much of it lately, I think it's coming along. Windows are looking great, we're really excited about it. We had at least 90% of windows done, but I think there's a little swath that you can tell that, trim here and there, so it's very, like, back, obviously, those are all old. So, there's been a ton of work, it's been done. Siding, a big majority of the north is completed, there's a few squads that need, so we take care of. West is all set. East is all set, main, the part that's not sited is the back. We've had those buildings reset. I guess, we put a, Ryan and I put a number on it at 80%, we're saying on the back, sections here and there, and still need to be... And the doors, update, the doors, there was a delay of shipping, so those will be here Friday, and we made a tentative plan to kind of install those doors after, sorry. I think the big takeaway I had, trying to, they kind of put a 30-day, they anticipate from when they accept the doors to when they're done, so they're reviewing the certificate occupancy on the 30th, 31st, September. Everybody seemed to be agreeable to that date, so that's kind of a late date of the date.
Was the next building meeting a date set? Because I wasn't around for that, do you know what it was?
Wednesday, the 5th. At, September, picture. Wednesday, the 5th, at 9:00 AM.
Thank you. I wasn't at that meeting, I missed that. I'll add that to my calendar.
So, overall, it's, windows are fantastic, we're really excited.
Yep, and I wanted to just mention how well the custodians did, it's astounding how great they have the building looking amid all the chaos that's been happening in the rooms, they've worked really hard. I want to very publicly commend them, it's been fantastic.
It was, it was a challenge, to be honest with you.
Yeah, but they did it.
For our custodians, to do what they do on a regular summer routine, to take everything out of the classrooms and just get everything cleaned up, and then take care of our little list that we want to have done on our end, painting certain classrooms and moving rooms. We didn't really have any teachers that really owned, besides just two that did flip-flop with the Tomask on campus. Some of the rooms, even when I walked through, they could only buff half of all the classrooms of construction, so they'd have to do it where they else they come back again. So, it really was, it was a challenge, so our custodians really had to kind of bounce around the building, which is not typically how they would, you know, do their whole summer routine. But they did a great job, and same thing with the teachers, we wanted to make sure we recognized the teachers had very little time to get in, and just until last week was the first time we were allowed in the building, which you know for elementary teachers...
Especially elementary, yeah.
August 1st hits, and they want to be in their classrooms, and laminate, the laminator was had a heart attack the other day, and everything that's being done, so it really is just good to see. Everyone just kind of came together, I mean, Brian was out there, he was setting up classrooms, he was delivering boxes, and Alan was doing the same, he and I were trying to do it as much as we could to kind of just get all hands in, make sure everything cleaned up. And it did, really come together, whether we like it or not. Students will be here on Wednesday, so it could be, or of course, anybody.
Yeah, yeah. And it'll be like the hottest day of summer.
Yes, exactly, yep, yep.
It was busy summer, so we had some other things in lobby to manage this lobby, so if you couldn't get down there today, because they're working on windows, it is red-silver.
Nice.
That's a nice job. Down there, you saw the calf floor that we placed, which is fantastic, we really hope that product holds up, just because of the tiles in there that make a lot of wear and tear, so keeping our fingers crossed that that floor can hold up. Maybe there's other common areas that we can replace, like the kindergarten thing down here, this is some tiles that for whatever reason, tend to kind of get popped up, we need to replace them more, and then also, second floors, certain areas of the building, whether or not the way it was designed, or there's joints over wherever it is, tiles do pop, pop, and it's, this floor can hold up, we need to kind of... We are also working on removing trees. I guess, the town has took it upon themselves to not only remove a bunch of trees out of the back of the ball field, but we had talked about taking out some trees, we met with Kim Roy, police chief and fire chief, about taking a few trees out on Chappell's parent drop-off pickup to kind of widen those two lanes that come in. Reason being, we had the discussion about traffic pushing out on 106, so we had a meeting of the minds, and we just, the only real way to improve the traffic on 106 is to get more cars on campus and just kind of work the flow in there.
Also, we're going to point out those trees specifically for safety issue.
Yes, there's, I want to say, at least four pines that are there pretty much, and anyways, last year, we had a couple of storms, we definitely had trees that ended up in a couple of cars, so you're right, it's a safety issue that clear those trees out and we have more space.
Have they cleared the parking lot area satisfactory for you guys, for what you want for drop-off yet?
Not yet, they said it will be done. So, what they're going to do is, they're gonna push it over, push half the space over, so I talked to them this morning, and they said, "Don't worry, it'll be set up, just push it over." I want to say, probably two lanes wide that they have taken, so he's gonna pull it back, so it's just, he said it will be taken care of, and they'll have everything now, so we'll make sure that we do, kind of like a walkthrough, make sure everything's done, those trees don't... We have a new HVAC, HVAC contractor, Cody Johnson, so they've been in all summer, they've been trying to pass the job, just really pleased to work with them. We've got a work, we've got a layer for us, but decided to try out this company, and they've been excellent, very happy about it. And we had a great opening, I will say, teachers came back from the high school, they were buzzing about Joy's message, Jill's message, and then they had this speaker, Steve McGuire, he was a rock star.
He was.
Teachers were positive, there was a lot of good energy, Ryan and I had followed up, we had a staff meeting. It's a tough act to follow, but he was, he was amazing, and a lot of teachers gave real positive feedback, they were ready to go, they were excited, despite some of the obstacles that we do have in front of us.
Absolutely. So, why don't we talk about buses? So, one of the things that we have been working on this summer is the bus schedule. We've talked about this the last couple of years, our buses hold, the traditional bus holds 72 students is the maximum the bus can hold, that is three students per seat. So, that really is extraordinarily full, when you think of a sixth grader with a backpack, and needless to say, they tend to all sit together, so, you know, they can be a pretty good size. One of the things that we had put out about mid-June, I don't remember the exact date, Kane put out a note to parents saying that if they wanted or requested a different bus for daycare or drop-off or whatever, they needed to let him know by July 15th, by the middle of July, July 15th, same thing they've done every year, same process we've always used. The bus company has really struggled with overflowing students and trying to accommodate some of the parents' requests. One of the things, I'm not sure if everyone is aware of this or not, whether or not a parent drives their child every single day, whether or not they attend the Y every single day, we still have to hold a seat on that bus. Yes, it's a legal requirement, so even if we have 50 or 60 families, which is what we believe is average, drop-off pickups by parents, we still have to maintain a bus, because that parent is not obligated to drive to school, we are obligated to transport them to school, because there may be days they don't, they don't drive, so we have to maintain a seat on those buses for them. And the same way for the Y. So, it's a numbers game, and even though you divide 72 into 614, it's not exact, because the buses can't pick up exactly, like, on one street, there might be, you know, 12 kids, and you can't have a bus go down half the street, and, okay, U6 come on here, and U6 go there, you know, it's a little bit more, it's a lot more complex than that, actually. So, it's been a struggle that we've had. I would say, Christine, am I guessing right, six years ago, seven years ago, we dropped a bus?
Around that time, yeah, we went from 10 to 9.
We went from 10 to 9. The reason being that we were declining enrollment. When I started, this is my 13th year, we were over 700. So, we went from that number down, and about six years or so ago, we were right hovering around the 600-ish or below, probably below, it was probably more the 580s mark, so we were able to drop a bus, which is a pretty huge cost savings. So, the cost of a bus, just an FYI, if we do not share the bus, if we don't share the bus, is about $50,000.
Five zero.
Five zero.
Fifty-six.
Fifty-six.
Fifty-six, if we don't share.
Okay, thank you.
What do you mean by "don't share it"?
Okay, so, I just, thank you, I didn't even send you the check yet. So, the question, so what does "share" mean? Share means sharing it with Silver Lake. So, if we need the bus for Silver Lake students, and we need the bus for the elementary students, we share the same bus, so Silver Okay, so, thank you. I didn't even send you the check yet. So the question, so what does share mean? Share means sharing it with Silver Lake. So if we need the bus for Silver Lake students and we need the bus for the elementary students, we share the same bus. So Silver Lake pays $28,000, Halifax pays $28,000 because we're using the same bus. They do two different runs. If we don't need that bus for Silver Lake, it is owned only or paid for only by Halifax. So we share all buses in the district except for Kingston. Kingston has to pay for one extra bus that is not shared. They pay full price. But otherwise, we share everything because obviously it's better for everyone if the money is sort of split.
So all nine buses are shared?
Yes, all nine buses are currently shared. But if we have to add a 10th bus,
That's fifty-six.
it would be about 56. And again, that's based on numbers. This year, it might be more next year, but give you a ballpark number. So we've been working with the bus company. They have worked really diligently to try to accommodate the requests that we've had. One of the things that we tried to do was to limit, people were having bus stops where they would go to grandma's house on Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, daycare Tuesday and Thursday, and then get on their bus at home in the mornings. So there could be three different buses that a child may be on. We were unable to accommodate that numerically. So one of the things that we tried to do was to set some limits on the number of buses because again, you know, having three different seats is obviously impacting numeric. I mean, you know, you do the math on it, adds up pretty quickly. So it has been a challenging year. We've had lots and lots of conversations. I believe we are now at the finish line?
Approaching it.
We are approaching it. We have had numerous conversations again today. And Kane had put together some numbers. I'll sort of let him fill in. I just wanted to give you a little bit of background history.
So when, is, we're kind of sifting through some of this. We've really been trying to figure it out, what we can sample together. So if we're looking at, right now, we have nine buses. So we have enrollments at 614, nine buses. We ended up, David, who's been fantastic at First Student, by the way, I gotta make sure I get him plugged.
Yeah, absolutely.
He's pulling his hair out.
He is.
He's getting phone calls. I'm getting phone calls. Joy's getting phone calls. We're all trying to figure it out. So he was able to get four buses that have a 77-seat capacity. Is there a couple of routes that definitely?
Are larger.
Are larger for whatever reason, whether it be in a neighborhood or there's daycares in that, in that particular area. So.
Do you have to know what bus numbers goes in there?
I can't. That's me a second.
Yeah. So what we did was tried to accommodate where the requests were. And there's some particular daycare areas that by increasing the capacity on those buses, we're able to meet more requests, if that makes sense.
What were the requests for all of those?
I think we're just about it all. We're getting there.
So it gets a little tricky. So we've done the majority of requests. So it gets a little tricky with the requests because there are a number of families that have requested just to even up switch. So their home address is bus 49, and they want to just make a full-out switch because their grandparents are on bus 51. So they just take one bus instead of 49, they're taking 51, which all those are going to accommodate. So I want to say there's a good 12 to 15 probably that are just looking for an even-up switch.
How many new, how many general changing?
About 25.
Twenty-five? And how many of those were moved before July?
Like three.
Yeah. I mean, that's the other problem we're dealing with.
Really, it's a very small percentage.
Three out of 25.
It's, I can, I can give you the number because what they had to do is they had to email Ellen directly. They had, because we requested it, blasted it out there. But it's a very, very small number.
The only reason I ask that is because someone had approached me and said, why are we doing, why are we, when we're now, two days ago, at the time, was when Power School started having this issue? Like when, where along the process did we know we were going to have a bus? I guess my takeaway would have been, had you come and said, oh, no, 25 out of 25 people told us the second week of July, they need bus accommodations. So, yeah.
The way the bus routes are generated, so once we get enrollment numbers and somewhat accurate enrollment number, then that's put into Power School, which is our management system. And then that's sent over to the bus company. Then they pull up the lists and they just somehow generate, oh, there's this many kids on this bus, there's this many kids on that bus. Then we have to factor in all of these requests. So if First Student doesn't have all these requests.
Right. Oh, that's, that's.
They design their bus route.
Right, right. And again, you know, just, it isn't just that they have requests. There's never been a guarantee we honor requests, you know? And it says that on the letter. You know, and again, you know, it's, it's a little different. There seems to be more requests in Halifax than any other district. I honestly don't know why.
We're always in it. We're on the way over here.
I do know that a lot of parents are famous and I know the drop-off is safe because of duration.
Duration of?
The duration.
A ride. Yeah, yeah.
So like my, my kids get picked up and they're on a bus for like 15 minutes, which I don't care. But yeah, there's some mornings where we're not up and going by 7:15.
Right.
Because they got to be outside at, you know, 7:20.
Right.
Yeah, drop off.
Right, right.
And that's just, that's, that's probably the most consistent one I care.
Right.
So did we solve that problem? Remember how we had talked about how kids who are picked up first are also being dropped off last?
Yes.
Did we solve that and make sure that they're picked up first and dropped off first? So we switched them?
Without us riding the buses every day, I don't know. We made it clear to the bus company.
That we want to change.
Should be just first.
Flipped. Okay.
From morning and afternoon.
Okay.
So first pick up, last drop off. Last year, we figured out there was one particular neighborhood that was picked up last and dropped off first in, just the way they, I have no idea. But it created, the people at the end of the route, I mean, there were certain kids in certain neighborhoods that were on the bus 50 minutes old waits, which is an equity issue. So we addressed that mid-year last year. Basically, it's the same as Kane passed the people.
So at what point, because I know we have fluctuating enrollment, right?
Yep.
So we had like a small sixth grade class go out, then a large kindergarten class come in. And you said when we shared with Silver Lake, how far, I mean, you don't need to give me specifics, but how far away are we number-wise to actually needing another shared bus?
I don't believe we need a shared bus for Silver Lake.
Okay.
Part of the other thing that happens on the secondary level is juniors and seniors tend to drive.
Right. So we're going to lose numbers on the bus.
Yep. So I don't, you know, and again, going back to the saving a seat issue that we talked about, you know, numbers differently, you know, like almost no seniors. So even though you sort of have to have a seat, you know, you can say, okay, there's, there's 70 students listed for this bus, but I know only 50 of them will really be on this bus. Because obviously, the high school kids are even bigger, secondary kids are even bigger. So, you know, there's a little bit of a juggle. But I do not believe that I'm aware that we need or have had any questions or at all from Silver Lake about Halifax needing an extra bus. So I don't anticipate that happening. There's a couple of things around buses in talking with David, because again, David and I have spent a lot of quality conversations trying to resolve this. And he really has been wonderful trying to accommodate us. So one of the things he talked about was whether or not we wanted to think about really going back to getting a new contract, a new 10-year contract. Because next year, we'll have another one-year contract within the contract that we have. But if we were to do a more extensive contract, like Plymouth just did a 10-year contract, they can even out some of the costs. Like you know what you're going to get for a longer period of time. Also, Plymouth was able to get all new buses. And the way they were able to do that was by sort of spreading out the contract. And First Student was certain that they would have the business for that period of time.
So we could go and purchase the vehicles and head take on the other.
Exactly. Yep.
Which makes sense because I know we had mechanical issues with the buses last year a few times.
Well, we, one of the ways I got the number down as low as I did, even though it's high, was I literally was like begging, like they were trying to give us like an eight or 10% increase initially when they gave us the, I mean, and I was like, there's no way we could do this. And there was no other bid. I mean, you know, I got, I got, you know, almost 3,000 kids here. Somebody help me. You know, they did finally bring it down to about a 4% increase, but it, it was painful and long and it took a lot of phone calls. But, you know, the idea of sort of spreading it out is a thought. One of the things I also have questioned, because Plymouth very much deals with what Halifax does, is the length of the rides. Is, is there any logic to making some purchases of 45-passenger buses, a couple of smaller buses, that you don't have so many kids you have to pick up, that you can do shorter runs, you know, for these sort of far out areas? I don't know if it makes sense. But, you know, I have known of areas where that does make sense for kids, you know, so that you don't, you aren't trying to hit a million places. You know, you know, you've got a longer drive, you know, you can make the run to the areas that are farther out, pick up the smaller groups of kids and bring them in. There's some conversations if we were doing a new contract that could happen.
I mean, they've brought us some new options, but I haven't been able to.
Yeah.
So are any of these like alternative options in that?
About 10 minutes? Okay.
10 minutes. Um, are any of these alternative schedules, routes, et cetera, options in the, remember we did that like study?
Yep.
Bus study?
There, there were some ideas that they had in this study. Some of them, I think we can look at as if we're talking about a new contract.
And we did find out though was that some of the thoughts they did have, there was nothing significant, significantly changed the pricing that we're doing. And they were able to maybe try to turn minutes, handful of minutes on some of the rides, and it was just more group stops, less, you know, we do have group stops, but we also try to be mindful of kindergarten students versus sixth grade students. So how, you know, it's the best way to balance out. But in the end, there was nothing significant that came without that, said, oh, that's it. That's what you should be doing. So sometimes it's just a challenge to try to make it all work.
Is the financial impact of large buses?
None.
Okay, so none, none now, but because they're doing it as kind of a convenience.
This year's only.
Right. So next year, we'll re-doing the contract.
Next year, we're going to need to really think about what we want to do.
Especially for loser.
Yep, yep.
So what was on the kids that live on the, on the Plymouth line to Dennis?
Yep.
Right, to boost up their enrollment?
I like it. Yep, there we go.
Yeah.
Yeah, just a thought.
They have school choice.
Yeah, exactly. Yep.
Just a few more numbers for you guys, just so that you can kind of, even, because it's, the bus numbers are always changing because we do have the Y program and we have parent drop-off and pickup. So these are rough numbers that share. So bear with me. So the Y program before school, at, and every day is different, averages 25 students. The afternoon for the Y program is about 40.
It's about what, 40?
Forty.
You don't mind if I say it? Nope.
And parent drop-off, and this is a rough number. We're trying to kind of get a really good number. We're going to ballpark it between 60 and 70, parent drop-offs.
Kids or parents? So 60, 70 kids?
Or cars.
Or cars, that's right.
I'll say students.
That was an A, B, or C?
The Jeopardy music we're playing.
There's a lot of cars coming. And then parent pickup is between 50 and 60. Students.
Is the Y program?
Like nowadays, they have 13. I think it's a 13 to 1 ratio. And it's basically depending upon their staff. And right now is a particularly difficult time for the Y because a lot of times they are the college kids that are working for them. They're all heading off to school. So we, we did meet with them and we talked about, at least in the afternoons, they need to pick up.
So right now, what requests, what types of requests have you honored?
We've honored all of the requests that are just a one-switch bus. So every child has one bus. David and I and Joy are, we're working through the request to have two buses. Because, mind you, they need two buses for an AM ride and a PM ride. So we have above, it's less than 10.
Yeah, sorry. Two buses for an AM and a PM.
So they're, because you need to hold a spot for them.
Oh, so you're saying they get picked up at one AM, they drop off at the second AM?
They technically take a spot on two buses.
Yes, for two rides, which is really difficult with the numbers that we have to hold two spots. And it's just, right now, we're working through it. So as the school starts, we can kind of check out the numbers. There might be a lot more kids picked up or dropped off, but.
I don't really see the necessity for us to honor those requests. I mean, that's pretty.
I will tell you, in any district that I am aware of, there's, there is no switching of any buses.
Right, right.
And paid, I paid $265 for one child.
I understand working parents, but at the end of the day, if we're offering transportation to school and you can't make that work from one app, that's not our responsibility to fulfill their requests.
I tend to agree with that. I mean, we can grant everyone one bus, but when we get into granting them two, it really does become extremely difficult to accommodate, to be driving.
So is that 10 of those you said, Rob?
It's under 10.
Yeah, I think it's like eight or nine.
Working for the people who have asked for just a complete switch?
Yes.
Yeah.
And that's really okay?
Yes. And we're working through the doubles. But it's hard right now to see. We don't have an exact number on the Y program yet. And then for the parent drop-off, anything else.
Also, there comes an issue of, are there, are there, like we talked about, is there a stop at that house issue? Like, are we making extra stops on the bus route to accommodate certain situations? You know what I mean?
Um, so we.
Which kind of adds an extra layer to the conversation.
What we did is, there was one particular neighborhood that we used to go down that road because there was a childcare there. But now what we do, because we drop kids off on that road, on the main road outside, we made a stop on that road.
Which is not a big deal because it's already in the route that we're already on. As long as we're not adding, yeah.
Does that make sense?
Yes, yep.
So it's just, instead of going down the road, we'll make a stop where there's whole school kids.
But all those kids are being picked up from that, that app.
Yes, yes. And there, there's a good number. Which is great. We want to accommodate. It would be helpful if we can.
Oh, no, I didn't.
To, to your point of extending bus routes is, I mean, some kids own buses like 45 people a night. I mean, they go to Hannah's house one day and, you know, neighbors next day. We do what we can. I think, I think we've done a pretty good job. We're going to work and see how the first few days go and get some better numbers as they come through. And maybe we can accommodate those couple of families.
Okay, so as of right now, start of school, we are not accommodating those, those extra.
The doubles?
Yes, the doubles.
There are a couple that can be.
Okay. But a few we're not sure about, so we're going to wait and see how it goes.
The numbers right now, they're just.
Two, yeah.
What kind of percent does that say?
Yeah, that sounds like.
Well, we, we had previous years.
Where we did this.
Yeah, it had, you know, and then that is part of the problem is, you know, as we're a few days before school at this point, I think, to be honest with you, that the bus discussion will be sort of ongoing this year for Halifax. I think we're going to need to make some decisions this year. And I think what we need to do is to get that word out early. So there is no excuse, like, you know, that the parents can't say they weren't aware. I mean, it has been in our handbook always that we will accommodate as possible. You know, the problem is, is, you know, we're educators. We want the kids to be able to get here. You know, we're, we're trying to do the right thing, but to your point, you know, there's precedent. So I think we're going to have to make some decisions that will, will be necessary in this coming year because these numbers, you know, either we're going to need to purchase another bus, or if we're going to keep the number of buses we have, we're really going to have to think about how we run the buses.
Controversial time for you guys.
Exactly. Oh, it's, it's been astounding. It's been astounding.
75 to 80% would not even be nominated because of the fact that they didn't submit their request by that.
Right. Well, that's, that's extremely.
Be extremely accommodated to many of the families.
And like anything else, if you do somebody a favor over and over again, then all of a sudden, you say, sorry, I can't, this has been the policy.
Yeah.
Well, that, that's where I think we're the position at, because it's done that way for so long.
Right.
So now we're seeing it, we're running into responsibility.
So do you want to put that on the future agenda?
Yes.
Yep.
We can just, yeah, we can give you guys updates on, like, as of, sure, with traffic, the traffic that they're causing, and how long routes are for students.
I'm curious to see how the new drop-off pickup situation goes. I mean, so, I mean, obviously, you're going to have like some sort of detail out there, right, to sort of direct parents on the...
And Mike will be up there.
Yes. It really is just kind of making like a third lane that comes through.
Yeah.
It's not particularly ideal right now with the construction that's down there, but hopefully we can.
And we are in Massachusetts, and clearly, we have merging issues in this state, so...
We do have that. We do have that.
So we can structure issues.
What time do you typically see parents showing up to drop off? Like, we have a line of parents sitting out there waiting for the school to be open so they can be dropped off?
Absolutely. At the very least, 8 o'clock, if not earlier. And there are some parents that have just dropped their kids up late, which...
They shouldn't be doing.
We make phone calls to, because you're on camera. Just to kind of make sure that they're able to tell the...
It's 8:15, correct? Is the earliest that they can be dropped off?
8:15 is the time that they're allowed to come in.
And now we have the chain situation with the sign and the whole, okay.
Yep, just so there's a chain down there that says if it's after 8:30, you have to come and report to the door. And you cannot drop off before.
Before, right.
What time do you see the buses show up? Just looking for typical, what time do you see the bus show up?
The AM? Earlier, earlier that night. There's, there's two, maybe three that show up at like 8, 8:05, which we've always told them, if you're sitting out with a busload of kids, then, you know, there's 10, 15 minutes to save.
Yeah.
But for the most part, by 8:20, 8:23, they're all, all the buses are in.
So you mentioned the early thing, and I had a parent address this with me last year. You did bring that up to the bus company because there was a parent that was concerned about the length of time their child was on the bus, and then they found out the bus was sitting out here for 15 minutes, and they were really unhappy about that.
Absolutely. I mean, we tell them, like, it's a recipe for disaster.
Oh, yeah.
Sit out in front of the school, seven kids.
You've got a bunch of 10-year-olds jumping around.
Whether it be, you know, 95 degrees, or it could be freezing cold, and you're just sitting there with one adult and seven kids. I would...
Yeah. Plus, it's so early, some of these kids get on the bus, you know, like going to the high school, that even that 10 minutes in the morning is, is a huge help for them, you know?
What we do in the beginning of the year, we do this every year, and we have our staff just kind of keeping track of times when buses show up and then times when buses leave, just to kind of collect the data. And we do, we'll do that too with parent drop-off. It's a number that we've never really kind of recorded, but with the issue that issues now, then I think we can really get a better number to share maybe next month.
Okay, great.
So in terms of the buses, again, I think we're as good as we can be at this point in time. Again, I want to recognize Kane and Brian and David Heath. They really have worked very diligently to do our best to resolve all the issues that we can, and I think we have done a really good job. There's been a huge time investment, and I think we are very close and we will get there. Opening days went great. I think you sort of heard that all around. The one thing I did just want to mention that Kane didn't mention is the Halifax kids sang for opening. We had a lot of cheering kids, they were wonderful. Brenda Lassard, the Halifax music teacher, was able to get some kids who were willing to come and sing for opening. It's the first time I was able to bring elementary kids in. It was wonderful. It was wonderful. There were about 15 kids. I especially want to thank the parents who were willing to drive the kids. We've previously only used secondary kids, so it's the first time we've sort of gone down to the elementary. So we had Halifax kids come and Kingston Intermediate kids come. So it was great. So they each sang a song. The kids did a fantastic job. We even had a Halifax student do a solo. I can't think of what her name was.
Katie Arnold.
Katie Arnold even sang a solo as part of it. So the kids really did a great job, and they got a standing ovation from all the teachers. So the kids were very pleased with themselves, which was great. But it was very inspiring to have the little guys come up and sing. You know, there's about 500 of us for opening. So Halifax Elementary sang, Kingston Intermediate sang, and then the band played a song. So it was...
That was great.
Yeah, it was really, really fun, very uplifting. We had a great speaker, and Jill and I sang and danced, and we had a great time.
You danced?
I'm teasing.
You danced, so it was...
Yeah, yeah, so. And your school calendar is inside, and the first day of school is Wednesday morning, and we're excited about it.
Yep. So we have no need for executive session. Teacher in-service is today and tomorrow. The first day of school officially for students is Wednesday.
Yep.
Labor Day, September 3rd, there is no school. October 8th, there's no school for Columbus Day. October 9th is an in-service day, there's no schools, no school back-to-back. And the 15th is our next meeting at 6:00.
Yes.
I always forget, we changed that to 7:00. And I'm assuming at that point, we'll be back in the library.
Yep.
Oh, good question. When is the open house?
More time?
5:30, 5:30, 7:00.
All right, so no one else has any further discussion?
Just have one question. Will I need to sign the warrant this month?
We will probably ask you to come in the first Monday of October to sign the warrant.
Okay.
And I'll let you know when there is.
Okay.
Shmoja? All right, on to favor. Bye. On to Union 31. Woo-woo.